I'd like to call the Westmont Village Board meeting to order on Valentine's Day, February the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simsky for roll call.
Mayor Gander.
Here.
The clerks here: Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzal.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Manager May.
Here.
And Finance Director Parker is here. I just don't know where he is right this moment.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Evening. First item is open form. Do we have any requests? We do not have any requests, so I'll close open form and move on to reports. I have the first report, and the Citizen of the Year nominations are due by Friday, March eighth. You can get in touch with the Chamber at westmontchamber.com for an application, and please submit those to them. The new event this past weekend, the Park District Ale Fest, was a huge success. I didn't have an opportunity to attend, but I know Trustee Barker, Trustee Addington. So we had a lot of individuals.
Linda was there.
Trustee Little.
I worked it.
She worked it. So from what I understand, they had almost five hundred people for the first event.
Five fifty.
Like I said, five hundred and fifty people for the first event. So that, it was very, very successful. They stayed off a football weekend, and that went real well. The Hundredth Anniversary Committee, we met earlier. We're working on a new brochure for all the historical murals, and we're going to have one for each mural, kind of use those as a history, maybe in the schools. And our Hundredth Anniversary will begin in the year two thousand and twenty-one, that January, and our birthday is in November, the tenth, I believe. Yeah. And so all the activities that year will be geared towards the Hundredth, and the last activity, of course, will be the holidays, the community event. I'll move on to Clerk Simsky.
I just want to remind everybody that on Monday, February eighteenth, Village Hall and offices will be closed for President's Day. And the Public Information Committee meeting will be next on February twenty-seventh at ten AM, and right here in Village Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move over to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is, will be March twenty-eighth at four thirty PM, right here in Village Hall. And I think I got my second official visual, so let's get this time to pop up. This is our Model Water Tower competition, February twenty-third, so pay attention to that. Look forward to seeing how that comes through. And next, keep that up. It's kind of nice to have one of those. The reality, the, the, next, I just want to thank Representative Mizaki. This past week, we had an open house at the Westmont Center. I thought it was very well-attended. The mayor and I were there, as well as Trustee Little. We even had our planning and zoning chairman was there, Mr. Pill, and just about every governing body in the neighborhood: the Downers Grove Township Assessor, the County Sheriff, County Board, York Township. She really did a good job of getting a lot of residents out, not just from Westmont, but from Elmhurst, Philip Park, Derry, and all the people I'm talking to. So, it's a nice, nice event. And lastly, turn this off and spend some time with your significant other, and have a happy Valentine's Day. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very long-winded Administration and Finance Committee meeting that started at four thirty and ended at just before six o'clock today. The most exciting part of it, though, was the public service awards that we gave out. We gave three out today. The Police Department, we gave an award to Maggie Burr, the Fire Department to Joss Bohanian, and the Public Works went to David De Seco. So those were, that was the exciting part of the whole evening. So, that's all I have. No, no, no. I'm sorry, it's not. I do have to mention that we do have the Irish Jig and Swig event coming up.
That's right.
It's going to be held March sixteenth. It's from two to six PM. Tickets are available online. They're fifteen dollars. You get a T-shirt, you get activities, you get transportation around town. And so go to WSCC@westmontevents.com and pick a bar, pick a restaurant, start there, and we're going to have a lot of fun, and I'll be there. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Another event run by a special guest. Very good. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont, first, there'll be no meeting in February. Our next meeting will be March eighteenth. And then the Environmental Improvement Committee met last week, and I just wanted to say, know that they've become great partners with the library. The library's done an excellent job of partnering with the EIC and the village in having all these speaker serieses, guest speakers, and programs funded, you know, partially by the village through the EIC, and then partially, partially by the, the library. And they've been great partners. They actually have a Green Speaker Series beginning in April. The sign-up begins, or the Green Speaker Series is in April. The sign-up begins February fifteenth, and I just, I can't thank them enough for their participation. It's been really excellent. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Addington.
Couple of things, Mayor. Thank you. First one is, congrats again. I know I've talked about this before, but the Westmont High School basketball team presently sits with a record of twenty-three and five. Their last regular season game is tomorrow night in Lyle, and then the state tournament starts next Tuesday in Beecher. So they have the number one seed in the subsectional tournament. So we'll see what happens, but they had a remarkably great season. I think it's the, only the seventh or eighth twenty-one season in our high school history. So, congratulations, kid, to those kids. And the other thing is, this weekend at Westmont High School is Wizard of the Oz. And it's a musical, and it's on Friday, Saturday, and I think the Sunday is a, I'm sorry about that. I didn't kill myself.
Go ahead, take it.
Is it really? No, it's not. She said it's Mark Bank. But I think Sunday is a matinee. You can get tickets at the door, and I understand that in order to do the munchkins, they're using kids from the junior high. So a lot of the junior high kids are involved in this one, too. So if you get a chance, go see it. Our high school has always done a great job in putting these musicals together. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-eighth, four thirty, here in the Village Hall. Citizens' Fire Academy, also staying on the Fire Department, is going to be starting up on March thirteenth through April tenth. Sign up. It is a free class. You can go to westmont.illinois.gov for more information. Police Department, there is a new feature story. Police Department and Communications are working on a feature story and press release regarding the Police Department's law enforcement internship program. Keep an eye out. It'll be published soon. And then also, at the Administration and Finance Committee meeting, the Award of Valor for the Fire Department was also given out to a firefighter, Brendan Sullivan. I want to congratulate him on that. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an Economic Development Committee meeting last Wednesday, and we didn't have anything new on the agenda, but Larry had given us a report of everything going on, and I'd like to report to the board and the public. Sometimes we hear what's going on in Westmont, and this was really exciting news. We have the Pasquenelli Drive Office Park Corridor going on. This is an eighteen-acre site that is going to bring in new offices and new businesses to Westmont. This is the largest office park that we have in Westmont, and the development there and the rehab is, is an exciting project going on. We've also had the Chicago Prostate Center has, has worked with our Taiwan Sister City Program, and this is going to enhance the success of CPS in our community and also enhance our Taiwan Sister City Program. The Ogden Avenue Corridor has seen the BMW and Porsche dealers' expansion projects. The Porsche is completed now, and the BMW is on the final stretch of what they have going on. These two projects will exceed thirty million dollars invested on the Ogden Avenue Corridor. And just north of the Ogden Avenue Corridor, we are seeing a lot of activity at the Ty Warner Park, and the Natatorium at Ty Warner Park has broken ground, and that is moving forward. We've also, I think, what most of us have seen, the renovations at the Hilton, Chicago Oak Brook Hills. So again, these two projects are a total of forty-seven million dollars invested in, in Westmont. So, really exciting things going on, on the Ogden Avenue Corridor. Downtown Westmont, we've, you know, we've seen Johnny Blitz. We've seen the revitalization of a, a lot of the TOD coming into play, and we're going to continue to see those developments coming forward in the near future. And then I know everyone is so excited about the Southwestmont Business Corridor. This is going to be referred to as the Market Center. We've heard earlier tonight that we were hearing other businesses wanting to expand their services because of the improvement going on here. This represents a forty-five million dollar investment in Westmont. So again, probably one of, I don't know how you rate all these exciting things going on. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, we are not going to attract these type of developments if we don't have a strong infrastructure. And we've seen the community improvements on the stormwater, the alley reconstruction. Mike is, is bringing us the Public Works Facility, possibly some water towers coming our way. And again, this will continue to attract these programs that, and, and projects that we're seeing moving forward. So, really exciting stuff that Larry has, has recapped for us, and we look forward to continuing that trend. Secondly, as long as I have everyone's attention, I have a very special guest to, to bring us some information about Restaurant Week. If Mr. Greg Pill could come up and give us the rundown.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Barry, and good evening, everyone. Greg Pill, Chairman of the Restaurant Committee for the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I'm here to talk to you about an exciting event. It's our Third Annual Westmont Restaurant Week. This year, it's going to run for eleven days. It begins on March, excuse me, February twenty-eighth, and runs through March tenth. So it's from a Thursday to the following, two Sundays later. And we've got somewhere in the low thirties. We've, we've beaten last year's record of twenty-nine, and we're somewhere around thirty-four, thirty-five restaurants right now. And if history is any indicator, we'll probably get a couple more in there. So the program basically works that if you go to westmontchamber.com, we have thirty-one of the menus already listed up there, so you could see what the offers are. And we've asked restaurants to come up with specials specifically for this time period in the ten, twenty, thirty, or forty-dollar range. So there's something for every budget. Not every restaurant will have each of those four. Some will. Some will just have a ten dollar. Some might only have a thirty dollar, but they're all over the board. There's breakfast, lunches, dinners. There's desserts. There's coffee and muffins. There's a lot of different options. They say that it takes seven marketing touches before somebody actually gets a message, and I want to thank neighbors of Westmont because Restaurant Week is in here eight times. So we actually have an extra one in there. So hopefully, everybody received one of these at their homes, and they're aware of it. Also, on February twentieth, which is a week from yesterday, there'll be an article in the Suburban Life talking about Restaurant Week, and that'll be available online, as well as in the newsprint, written by a very famous author. There's also going to be the Chamber Semi-Annual Open House that night, which will take place from five to seven PM at the Tico Taiwanese Cultural Center, and will be previewing and revealing the menus that, we should have them all in by then, and a lot of the restaurants will have food down there that you can sample and sort of see what's coming ahead. We're also partnering once again this year with Al K Media to put together a video of at least five of the restaurants that are on Restaurant Week. We always pick somebody different so that they can get exposure. And then I'm very excited to, to announce that on the twenty-eighth, two weeks from today, we'll also appear live on ABC Channel Seven. We'll be on the eleven o'clock to twelve o'clock News Hour, and we'll have four restaurants down there with us, and we'll be talking about all the good food that you can get during Restaurant Week. So look for us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We'll be flooding the social media posts, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are, but we look forward to an even bigger one. I know Spencer's already counting the places for eating tax money. So, you know, we're tying it right into your long-winded meeting before, and hopefully, that'll make it short-winded the next time. Trustee Little.
Appreciate that.
Great. Any questions or anything?
Date of TV, again. What was the date of the TV show?
It will be a Thursday, the twenty-eighth, two weeks from today, and
It'll kind of kick off, yeah.
We don't have the time yet, but it's the eleven o'clock news, which runs for an hour. But typically, we're in the eleven forty-five to eleven fifty. It's towards the end of it. And of course, it's always subject to, you know, any kind of major breaking news. Then they bounce all the, the, the good stuff. So, anyway, any other questions? Thanks so much. Hope to see you at the restaurants.
Just a big thank you to Greg. You know, over and over again, every year, you go way on above what, what a volunteer is, is does there. So
It's a fun thing.
Just, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Greg.
Twenty-eighth is a big day all the way around us.
Meeting that night.
Mr. Mayor, I had somebody else, but they're not here. So maybe in miscellaneous or something. We'll see if, if our other presenter comes or not. But that's all I have for you right now.
In flag.
Larry, is that how you want to do that? Just, we'll just wait.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to items removed from the consent agenda. Any board member want anything removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Okay. Consent agenda this evening consists of the Village Board minutes. I don't have the date here of what those are. Be two weeks ago. Board to consider the, the ordinance for the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting held on
January thirty-first.
January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number Twenty, the aggregate amount of one million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars, eighteen cents. We have one purchase order. Don Morris Architect, forty-five thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Represents the plan review and inspection services for January. The total of purchase order, the purchase order and Finance Ordinance Number Twenty is therefore one million, six hundred and four thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, fifty-five cents. We have one community event on the consent agenda. It's the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau Open House. Board to consider an ordinance approving a liquor license fee waiver for the two thousand and nineteen Westmont Chamber Open House scheduled for February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. That completes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Under question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Four West Sixty-third Street, special use permit, site and site landscaping plan approval. Board to consider an ordinance for special use, the variance, and a site landscaping plan approval from Elio BK LLC regarding the property located at Four West Sixty-third Street as provided below. One, special use permit to operate a fast-food restaurant with drive-through on the property in the C-one Commercial Business District. Two, a zoning variation to permit a, a reduction in required parking. And three, site and landscaping plan. Community Developer Development Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, very briefly, the Burger King at the corner of Sixty-third and Cass is proposing to make some substantial investments in their property, improve it, update it, make it more attractive. When the plans were submitted to the village, we realized that there were some zoning approvals needed. First and foremost, a review of the records showed that we could not find any special use permit had ever been issued for this property, for the drive-through. So we advised that they should apply for that special use permit, just to make sure they have all the required entitlements for that drive-through facility. Secondly, they do not have enough parking on the site, per our current ordinances, and they are losing one or two as they try to accommodate some onsite stormwater detention facilities that our engineering department required for them. So that was also an item that needed to be approved. And then third, just without even those two items, the proposed improvements required site and landscaping approval. All of those items were submitted. The applicant and their representative is here tonight, an architect, Tracy, have been very cooperative. They did get caught up a little bit in the turnover in staff, which has delayed the review a little bit, so they've been very patient with us, as new staff has come on board and worked with them, as we've learned the, the zoning ordinances along with them. Plan Commission considered this at their meeting. They recommended approval of the special use permit. They recommended approval of the variation, or the variance for the parking, and they recommended approval for the site and landscaping plans. The one item, and I didn't notice it on the agenda, but I believe that the Plan Commission did recommend one condition of approval for the special use permit, and that is that an existing pole sign be removed and replaced with a monument sign. The applicants have expressed a willingness to do that, although they have said that in exchange for their cooperation with that, they would like to proceed with requesting a variance for some additional signage on the building. Staff thinks that's reasonable, but we explained that they would have to go through the process again, just to make that specific request, because it was not included in the notices for the special use and the variance that we've already processed. So they've submitted that paperwork, and we're moving forward. We plan to put that on the agenda in March, and then that request, again, for a variance for additional wall signage would be in front of you, presumably in late March.
So it really isn't taking down the pole sign. That's the problem. It's the additional ...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, it's not taking down the pole sign. It's the additional signage that requires them to go back through the process.
Yeah, by, by removing the pole sign, which has some nice visibility for them, but it's not consistent with the signage for new development in the area. They would want some better visibility through wall signage. That's the request.
We can't just do that as a condition to, to this one.
No.
Yeah, it's a, that's a
Now that Greg's left, I can, you know, I, I wasn't in agreement with, with that at the meeting, that, that, that pole sign. And, and I've gone there since the last EDC. I, I know Linda was there, and, and Ron was there. That, we talked about the pole signs, and I, and I looked, I see nothing wrong with their existing sign. I, I really can't see what's, what's so glaringly wrong with that sign. And so I just don't have that issue like, like they did.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I know you commented on, with your, your email, and, and so why I want to bring it forward today.
Right. It's, it's not a requirement that the pole sign be removed. It is a non-conforming sign. So as part of a comprehensive development like this, you try and get a property into conformity. That's like granting the special use permit retroactively, because they never obtained one, et cetera. But you don't have to impose that special condition if you don't feel it's warranted. Planning and zoning commission didn't, not think it was a glaring, I forget your word, but, but, but they didn't think it was necessarily a, a problem as much as there is a goal of the village to convert these pole signs to monument signs. So they're trying to further that, that goal that's stated in the sign ordinance.
How do, how does the petitioner feel about it?
Well, a little more of the story, if you want some more of the background. Before the item was even discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff, and this was primarily the, the interim planning consultant that the village has been using for the past few months after Joe left, I don't know how many of you have met Khan, but Khan had had some good discussions back and forth with the applicant, saying, hey, let's do some horse trading before this gets up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd agree to take that pole sign down, maybe we could agree to allow you some additional wall signage. We'd include that in the notice. It would all be done at the same time. Long story short, the applicant said, you know what? I, I don't want more wall signs. I want to keep my pole sign. Khan said, fine, that's how we'll proceed. Then, when it was up at the Planning and Zoning Commission for discussion, the issue came up, and the Plan Commission thought, well, this is our great, this is our opportunity to get rid of that pole sign. Let's require them, or suggest a condition of approval, that that pole sign be removed. That's how it was passed or adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, after which the applicant, in my opinion, quite understandably, said, well, if, you know, we're being told to take the pole sign down, we'd like to go back and, and revisit that idea of getting some additional wall signage in exchange. So that's how it came up.
Yeah. I kind of agree with Harold. That's why I said, ask what the petitioner's feelings were, if they just wouldn't leave it alone, then...
Yeah, I guess to answer the question directly, the, the petitioner's desire throughout has been to keep the pole sign.
Okay. I would, I would like to just comment on that. You know, and I, I don't find the, the pole sign to be an issue. It's been there for so long. However, I was under the understanding in Downers Grove, they forced everybody to the monument signs, and I would hate to have this company or any other one, you know, buy into a new pole sign, and then a couple years or three years down the road, it continues to go by the way of the monument sign, and everybody's made to do it, and then they lose their investment. So it might be a good idea to trade at this point, because it's a new opportunity, you know? And, and I'm not sure if that was a forced situation in Downers Grove, but I heard tons of complaining from all kinds of businesses that had to do it. And obviously, it wasn't by choice. Not that we're thinking about it, but somebody else sitting here could be.
Well, I think one of the things we, when, when was presented to us is we didn't want to have it that way. I think there would have been realtors on Ogden that way.
Right. Our sign ordinance does not, you know, force that anybody, it's, it's for changes in new, you know, moving forward. Our, the, the entire sign ordinance. And that, that's our understanding. Because of that as well, in Downers Grove, they gave them a, a fixed period of time to bring their, all non-conforming signs into compliance, period. So
But they're not, the sign that's there now, the pole sign, they're not really remodeling it. They're just changing the, the signage on top, or what, what are they doing with it?
You're asking about the pole sign at the corner?
Yeah.
My understanding is their, the applicant's preference would be to just leave it as is.
Just like it is.
So they're not spending any money at this point?
Right. And, and then as a non-conforming sign, they could do normal maintenance and repairs to it, but if the sign, you know, gets destroyed through, you know, a, a natural occurrence, like a bad storm, or it just gets old and falls apart, they can't reconstruct it, put it back up, et cetera, or they can't enlarge it. So Or a snowplow. Yeah. Even something like that. Once it's down, it's down. So there's some risk that, you know, i- if you want to allow it to continue, they may have to eventually deal with it, or deal with life without it.
The, the one thing where I thought it, it fit there is it seems like every corner, you know, King Car Wash, they, they all have them. So it's not like they're the only ones that don't have a monument sign, you know? And, and it seems, it's, there's nothing wrong with it. And so I, again, I, I just varied, I, my opinion varied different.
And the, the bank went to a monument sign. The bank, it's on the southeast corner, went to a monument.
That may be a monument.
From, from the EDC meeting, I've, I've been on a sign venue. Now I'm not in the alleys anymore, guys. I'm out on signs now. But, but it's amazing. There's, it seems like even the new mobile station that was just remodeled, they have a monument sign, but yet it's on poles. So it's almost like it's a combination of, it's, you know, it's elevated, but yet it's a monument sign. So I don't know exactly how our, where that falls in.
I think that, not to speak for Planning and Zoner, you would know better, but it was more about, the recommendation was driven that from that corner and all the redevelopment that's surrounding all sides of the Burger King, that view, you know, is following the current sign code. So, yes, there's So, yes, there's things nearby that are not like that, but that corner is one way, and it was more about fitting in on the corner.
And that, that sign's been there forever.
Yeah.
And it's got the traffic lights, and if we're worried about it fitting into what, into the Westmont Market over there, it's going to be on the opposite side of where they're doing all the redevelopment. So, personally, I don't have an issue with it either.
How long has Elio owned this?
Do you know how long the owners have owned the franchise?
At least 15 years.
Yeah. At least 15 years.
They've been good neighbors. What...
What first thing we need to do is on the items that were on the agenda, have a motion to approve as presented, and we'll vote on that. If someone wants to make a motion to allow them to keep the pole sign, that comes after.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the three conditions, with the three items that are on here.
Second, Nero. On the question, trustee Barker.
I just also, I wanted to comment, whether, they've been there a long time. I really felt over the years that the maintenance of the exterior of the building is lacking with landscaping and everything, and I would ask us to pay attention to that in years ahead so that it stays as a nice renovated place, and that we do have our eye on keeping that landscaping as planned, because it is a prominent corner, it's going to be even more prominent, and, you know, the better they look, you know, it's, you know, the package looks good on the outside, the food's good on the inside, kind of a thing. So, I would say we would keep an eye on that, but that would be the one issue that I would have, so.
I agree, Bruce. That seems to be something, we really put everyone through the wringer to come up with these, but then 10 years down the road, you know, how's that?
It doesn't always keep up that.
Well, we're talking about making some changes in the future to the site and landscaping plan approval process, and one of the additions would be a requirement, it's kind of implied, but we've stated that any approved landscaping plan, the landscaping would have to be, and fencing would have to be continually maintained and replaced as necessary.
That's a good thing. How much are they spending on the renovation?
I don't know the answer, but the architect for the franchise owner might.
The actual building remodel is about $250,000, but then on the site work, the bio retention is probably another $125,000.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
The only other thing I would, just as a point of reference, that I know this company only because they did some very positive things with Lions Clubs, and a very nice company, have made donations even to assist the Lions of Illinois Foundation, so a nice group of people, I like to work with them, they're good for our town.
Any comments from anybody in the audience? Any other, seeing none, I'd ask for roll call.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee, I've got to put my glasses on, Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, if somebody wants...
I'll make a motion that we not force the condition on the pole sign, leave it as it is.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to leave the pole sign, comments? I have one. I'm assuming they're not going to come in then for, wasn't that the idea, if they got the pole sign, they wouldn't come in for a variance for additional signage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it can't be both ways, that's one of the...
Well, any other comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
No.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, new business B. Washington Street Water Main Improvements. Board to consider ordinance authorizing a complete design and engineering service agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the Washington Street Water Main Improvements. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. This project includes approximately 2,000 linear feet of the eight-inch water main replacing the water, the six-inch water mains on Washington Street between Naperville Road and Burlington Avenue. The proposal estimates that this project will not exceed $40,200 for the design services and $69,500 for construction services, for a total not to exceed a feat of, a fee of $109,700. I do want to make a couple of comments about this. This is the last water main on the northwest corner quadrant of our town that we have not replaced. We've done every other street over there. Also, that street needs to be resurfaced, so it's important that we can do this water main, you know, fairly soon, so, which has been outstanding. And one thing I wanted to comment was that, you know, since this board and boards before you have been so proactive and so, you know, incentivizing, you know, getting out there and replacing all this water main for many, many years, it is really paying off. The last, you know, two and a half months, we've had one water main break. I know of two towns that have had almost 100 water main breaks in the same amount of time. So, you guys being so, you know, proactive and so encouraging to go out and, you know, and spending this money upfront, the backend, this is where we're starting to benefit from it. We're really saving a lot of money, but not having to go out there and fix water main breaks, you know, pay these guys overtime, all the material we're saving, you know, gravel, sleeves, patching, all of that, you know, so it makes a big difference in our town. You don't see a bunch of holes.
Keeping the customers in service.
Right, keeps our customers in service. You don't see a bunch of holes all over town from these water main breaks like you used to. You know, back in the day, replace this whole southwest section, now after this, we'll be done with the northwest section, you know. By the time, my goal was by the time I retired from here, we wouldn't have a water main that's older than 1980. Hopefully, I can continue to do that, but, yeah, it's really, it really has paid off. I really do want to thank all of you for being so proactive and so, having forethought to do all this because it really does pay off now.
And the guys got to appreciate it.
They do.
Because it's the only break on the coldest days, right?
Yes. I mean, we had that pole of Vortex, and those guys were not out there fixing main breaks. We had other things we had to do, but not in a hole, getting soaked in wet. Makes a big difference.
Did you hear on the news, the article in the city of Chicago, and all the trouble that they had with water mains, and they had over 400 hours of overtime to work on water mains alone?
Right. I mean, the infrastructure, I mean, you look at Lake Shore Drive collapsing, I mean, the infrastructure in this country is really lacking, you really have to spend that investment, and you guys have done that, and it's really paying off for us.
Again, this, this whole idea was something that was started 30 years ago, and the idea was to do a little bit every year. Couple of hydrants, some sidewalks, some streets, water mains, and, yeah, our infrastructure is probably much better than a lot of the communities because of that, and this has continued on through multiple administrations.
Yes, it has.
So, more power to everybody.
Have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question, none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C. Lease Amendment and Renewal, Marker School District. Board to consider ordinance approving a first amendment to lease and lease renewal with Marker School District Number 60 for space at Westmont Center. Manager May.
This is, Marker School District 60 is already our tenant, they have, their agreement is written, so that every three years, there are optional, you know, for renewal, and the next one does come up beginning July 1st of 2019. So, that renewal is in here, and when we do the renewals, we also have the, we use the new rate that we calculate for common area maintenance of the entire building, and that's implemented here, and then one other unique feature is that there's a, they, through their own remodeling project at Westview Hills, they've got, they're going to do over the summer, so as not to affect school operations, but they have to move some of the permanent staff out of there temporarily while they're doing the work, and they were leasing additional space in Westmont Center for the three months that that's going on, so that's covered in the agreement as well, and it kind of overlaps the term, so it's unusual, because it'll be June through August for that extra space. It's with the, I would call it Patty Belloc's original office back in there.
Kurtzold Office, yeah.
Yeah.
Have a motion.
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, and second to approve. On the question.
Yeah, just one, and again, I'll, Steve's, or to Mr. Forsberg, who's running away from me. Any parking issues?
I'm sorry?
This is, we're talking about the Markers administration, and the plot over by you, have we had any, any serious parking issues?
On a daily basis, on a typical basis, no, but there are times where they may have some activities going on, preschool, interviews, and things like that, or some of the construction teams have met there during the construction project at first, so sometimes there might be have six, seven, eight people coming in. When that happens, we use overflow on Quincy Street, one by 15 South Cass there, or there's some diagonal parking there, that's commonly used and further down Quincy by Ace Hardware, so, but at times, yes, it has happened, but not all that frequently.
Not all that much, good.
So, thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Under miscellaneous, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Barry, because I know you've got guests here tonight.
Our guests are here. No, that's fine.
Another five minutes, you would have been late.
They're okay. We have the Renkens here from Oakwood Electric, active members of our business community and Chamber of Commerce, and all-around good people, so the podium is yours.
Thank you. Sorry we're late, I thought it started at 7:00, my mistake. Excuse my mistake. So, my husband and I own Oakwood Electric and Generator, and we're right next door to us, so some of you might have heard about Kim Wing, her daughter's been diagnosed with brain cancer. She, Kim is a single mom, and she runs that business, and we see them all the time and interact with them, and the daughters had a headache and went to the doctor, and they found fluid on her brain, and they had to do a surgery to remove the fluid and, you know, check the tumors, and she's 12 years old, used to go to Manning, now goes to Westmont Junior High. So, there's a lot of efforts happening in the community, which is awesome to help support this family. I spoke with some people from Westmont Junior High. The PTO president is Courtney Templeton, and the vice president, Liz Rathburn. They have great effort in place, they're doing gift cards to help the family, they're going to do a meal train when Katie comes home from the hospital, they're going to do ribbons on the trees on all the schools, they're going to do a dodgeball tournament, possibly in the future to benefit the family. We had a nephew that suffered and died from leukemia, so we understand how expensive, and how sad, and how traumatic this is for a family, so...
She's not able to work right now.
Yeah, she's not able to work to earn money, and she's the breadwinner of the family, so it's really probably a real tough pill to swallow for them. So, we're going to organize a fundraiser at NEET. NEET has been spectacular, they're working with us and looking for donations from their vendors. We're still working out the details, but the specifics of the date is set, and that's March 13th. We would love to see your support, if you guys could join us, or anyone in the community that would like to join us. We're also looking for donations for baskets, we're going to have a raffle basket thing, and, you know, you're all probably on social media, so if, once we get the details settled, if you can share and like and do all those things to get the word out, that would be great. If you want to contact us privately about any way you think you could help, that would be awesome, too. There is a GoFundMe page, which has been started, which has gotten a lot of donations, but, you know, we know that a hospital stay and cancer treatment can be, you know, $100,000, so...
Hundreds.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we appreciate, some of you've already donated, we appreciate all of your support, but, again, any way you can help, or think of ways you can help, that would be great. They're a, you know, downtown business, they've been around for a long time, so, and just, you know, just to thank the Westmont community, just, as always, just stepping up to the plate, and just a great community to be a part of, everyone is really, already, I mean, this was Friday, we heard this, and today's Thursday, and there's just huge support from everyone in town, so...
And Kim lives above us, so she's, she's like a lot of us business people, so she actually lives there, and a lot of people would, you always associate her with her daughter, you know, she would walk to Manning, a very active member of Manning, and always out at Cruisin' Nights, always, again, a staple right there in the community, and as we all know, it takes a village to raise a child, so I would hope that the village could get behind one of our own here and help support all the way, I would hope.
Becky, is there an information sheet anywhere?
I can, the GoFundMe page has information about what's happened, and they're providing, it's her niece started it, they're providing updates every day about what's going on, but I can certainly send you the link, Commissioner.
Would you, because I think we'll take this to the Lions Club.
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
Do you know what the GoFundMe is, off the top of your head?
I don't know how to say what it is, but I can email you the link.
If you would do that, yeah.
And then you can share it with whoever you think would be helpful.
Good.
Send that to me, I'll forward it to the whole village board.
Oh, there you go, yeah, get it.
Okay. And then, I know that the school was talking about seeing if they could put ribbons on the trees in downtown, and Larry had explained to me what the process, so I shared that with them, and they're going to send you an email, I think. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for stepping up and helping.
Thank you for your...
Yeah, really. Good for you guys.
What color ribbons does she like?
She's pink, a pink ribbon is what they decided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.